Can I say my thing too?
Yes.
Yeah, you were asking everybody, so...
I believe, I believe, I mean, I can sit here and say I'm not for this either, but the thing is, what we're voting on tonight is because we closed Community High and moved it. These are the positions, correct?
But you're moving it. You're not closing it.
Well, we're moving it, but because of the numbers have already been going down on students. So, my thing is, if these people are laid off, if you guys are going to negotiations, then think of a way to move them somewhere, or, and let's get the numbers back up for Community High.
She gave you the re- how?
But I don't make that decision. You guys have to do that in negotiations. All I'm saying is, we're only voting on this. We're not picking 15 members from Local 64. We're picking the ones that were at Community High, and because of the numbers went down, this is how I'm reading this. We had to close the school. That was, we knew that was gonna happen because that, when we had closed, we knew that parameters, we were trying to stay in the budget. So, if you guys are gonna go to the table, let's work on getting those positions back by trying to find a place to put them. I'm not in that meeting. I don't know.
Ms. Skinner has the floor.
Okay. From what I understand, I was past this, what's already being hit. Now, I understand, most of this is out of your control. We get that. Okay? We've got Lansing to thank. We've got that. Okay? We're not unreasonable. Now, in addition to the wage freezes that we've had for, let's say, eight years, because I don't know exactly how long it's been. I just don't even look anymore. Okay? We're getting hit with 10% of our income for a state retirement that we've already been told, "We're not gonna collect that money when we retire anyway." That's money's gone. That's a gimme. Okay? You want 20% for insurance? Again, this is Lansing. We get that. Okay? Now, you're looking for wage concessions. If you hit us with the same 14% that you're giving them, do you realize you're looking at a pay reduction of 44% of our A? Forty-four percent? That's half our paycheck. How do we survive? You just... Now, as I said, I had one other train of thought, and I'm hoping this one goes quick. I'm really sorry, guys. I know it's hot. Okay, um, we've had this discussion. Okay, we're employees here. We have a boss. Hi, Kelly. Okay. Kelly has a boss. It's whoever. Okay? She has a boss. She has a boss. We go all the way up to Ms. Daniels over here. Okay? Ms. Daniels has a boss. Who is that?
The seven of us.
The board. The board has a boss. Who is that?
The citizens of Romulus.
The citizens of Romulus. Okay. Now, hold on. Wait a minute. No, 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 no. In my job, if my boss gives me a directive to do something, and I refuse to do it, I get a reprimand. Right? If I refuse repeatedly to do it, I get terminated. Your boss, the citizens of this city, have directed you for years. We want the cut starting at the top. The first and biggest cut should be this board, right here. The next cut and next biggest, I'm sorry, ma'am, because I don't know you yet. Hi, I'm Rhonda. Should be that lady there, and unfortunately, she stands alone. The next biggest cut needs to be over here, and on down the line. And you have been directed, and directed, and directed by the people of this city to make that happen, and it hasn't happened yet. And until these other cuts catch up to what Local 64 has given up, you don't have the right to come to us. Because your bosses are speaking to you, and you're gonna start to get reprimands. We're gonna start stepping up and doing something. We're not gonna take it anymore. You have been directed by your employer. We hired you. We can fire you. We make your paycheck, and we're tired of you not listening to us. We want this cut at the top first. Period. And if you don't wanna listen to just me, I can pass this mic around, and we can talk to a lot of the 20,000 citizens of this city. Now, we're tired of playing with it. We're tired of always taking the heat. We work our hind ends off for you guys.
Can I ask you one thing? How much do you think we make to sit on this board?
Sir, I don't have any idea.
Well, you just said you pay me. What, what do you think I make to sit up here on the board?
Anybody? They did take a cut. I'm gonna, they did take, was it five or 10% a couple of weeks ago? They did take 10% a couple of weeks ago.
And two years ago, the board went from $9,000 a year to $2,000 a year.
Okay. So, what you're telling me is you guys have done your job.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I didn't say that. I said it needs to start there.
And I'll tell you one thing.
And if it's been done, I'm happy with that.
You know how much stuff I do for free? I don't even get paid.
But now, we need to go to the next level.
That's my job. That's right. That's correct. That's my job.
We are in recess.
I'm finished. It's not true.
I need a chair.
It is true.
We are reconvened at 8:24 PM. The next speaker is Ms. Kathy Crawford. Thank you. Cindy Koch.
I'd like to be my business to somebody.
Next one, Ms. Lana Harris.
My name's Lana Harris. I've lived here about, I don't know, 14 years, and I'm also a bus driver. My question is, you know, with our, our city, in our school district, a lot of our people in our district are, are also residents like that, which they touched on that a few minutes ago. And it, it is possible that we could run ourselves right into the ground. Have y'all ever thought about that? I mean, I don't wanna be negative or anything, but we gotta have jobs in order to pay our taxes, in order to keep our schools going. And if our tax base drops any more than it already is, you know, then, how are we building up any kind of, selling our district by, I know we have a deficit, but, you know, you gotta come to the table and come together with each other instead of, you know, blocking out some people and, and putting other people in there, or what have you. And, and I just have a hard time seeing how our city is gonna, and, and our school districts are gonna grow if we're constantly just kinda chopping our own legs off despite our faces. And, and so I guess the, the question would be, isn't there some, some other alternatives other than just laying people off?
If we felt there were, we would have...
No, not feelings. I mean, is there, really?
No. In, in our opinion...
And, and what about, um, um, the whole idea of, why does it only come from the lowers?
It doesn't only come from the lowers.
Well, where, where, can you show us the savings from the top?
There will actually be...
I mean, because some numbers we asked for, we, you'd say, "I don't know. I'd have to look that up," or, "It's over there, and I, I don't know what the numbers are, and we'll get back to you." And, and that's just really unclear, and it's hard for us to, to think that we're really dealing with anything up and up.
And in response to that, and, and in response to the, to the employee that, and resident that submitted a letter to the board at the June 10th budget hearing, there will be the requested pie charts and, and things. Those will be part of the budget presentation. And they will clearly illustrate to you what's already been published and discussed. And perhaps people didn't see the particular publication, or they weren't present at the meeting, or they didn't hear, or, or read the minutes, what, what have you. I'm, I'm not saying...
But you have to have these numbers in order to base these layoffs on that, don't you? I mean, did, did you come and just, like, forget it all on your desk?
These layoffs are based on the fact that we're closing a building.
Okay. Well, you're moving it.
And we're having a reduction in staff as a result of that movement.
It's enrollment, correct?
And it's also because of the enrollment in the building in which they'll be...
And enrollment in the building just dropped off, like, what, like, last week? Or has it been doing this all year, or?
It's been doing it for several years. That's part of the reason we're in the financial situation we're in.
Okay. I knew that, but... So, we have to wait to see all those figures once our layoffs are already done?
Those figures are readily available on our site. I don't have them physically in front of me.
Does this get to your site? Does this put it up there on that board so we can see it tonight?
No.
Because I thought that that's what this did.
I'm not gonna get into...
You guys can't do that?
I'm not gonna sit here and negotiate with local...
I'm not negotiating. I'm asking you some questions about some things that we wanna know that you guys are, are putting forward.
We've clearly said the cost of ownership.
Okay, so, I mean, hopefully, you don't beat the bag till we ain't got a bag to beat, you know?
Next person who gets to speak is Jay Williams.
Hold on a second. I gotta say hi to this lady right here. I haven't seen her in a while.
I needed some love.
My name's Jay Williams. Most of you know who I am. I've never met you before, Ms. Daniels, I'm sure. Maybe I've heard some stories, and I went around around with the last super thimble. It's a pleasure to meet you. Everybody here knows that's my lovely wife, who I have to say lovely, otherwise I'd be a... I spoke to you earlier. I guess, just a couple of my questions, and it's already been touched on. And you know what? I don't claim to be a rocket scientist. I just sit back. I'm just a common guy. I come from the Romulus School District. I've lived here since '76. When my dad moved us out here, the only time I've been gone from here was the four years I did in service. And speaking of, maybe we could do something with that tattered flag?
I already made note of it.
Okay. I guess it goes down to these, excuse me, these closures. And I know, who was it? One lady had asked about the administrators over at the high school. I know we have three. We have the principal and the two assistants. And as far as I understand, the athletic director is an administrator. And now, we're gonna move, you called him the manager, who I would still consider an administrator there. So, we're gonna have five administrators at the high school, which, and if I'm right, the high school right now only has about 100 and something more kids than the middle school that runs two administrators. Five, I mean...
Three.
Well, but you still have to look at it at five.
Middle school has three.
Who's the third one?
Dean of student.
Okay. Then I apologize.
She's on a grant.
She's on a grant?
She's on a grant, is what they said.
Oh, okay. So, now, are any, are any of these five, are, are any of these five, do we have them on a grant? Just out of curiosity here at high school?
No.
So, I understand we need to eliminate some positions. I'm a realist, and, you know, my wife works for 64, but I understand things have to happen. It's no different than in our business. We have, we're on yearly contracts now. At one time, we weren't. I kinda disagreed with the three-year contract, and I understand why, but I can say this, as far as the business I'm in. We deal with a lot more money than that from year to year. And we deal with two of the biggest corporations here in the state of Michigan, which is ITC and Detroit Edison. Now, when they tell you, you're on a year-to-year, you know, at one time, we were on five-year contracts, six-year contracts. Doesn't happen anymore. So, I don't see how you can justify a smaller budget going to three-year. And it's just my opinion, and I'm not here to pick on anybody. But it's just business sense. Only reason I know is the last two years, I've started to take an open business. So, now, I've had to learn how to negotiate. In my opinion, it's not good business sense. I mean, but I understand, like you said, and I understand what you told her about having the loophole of being able to, I understand that too. And I asked earlier about the 14%, and I know Sherry will get me the thing. And I just did a rough estimate offline. I can kinda tell you what the 14% saves. About a million bucks, a little under. If you go offline roughly at about... Now, when you come to Local 64, and again, I'm not pointing any fingers. I'm not here to condemn anybody. I'm just trying to figure things out so I understand. When you ask a union that is roughly 6-point-something million a year to you guys, that's what they cost ya, and you tell them you want 3 million in a concession, 3 million is not 14%. And to ask 14% of a union that's only doing 6 million, what I'm saying is you, is you need to ask for that deduction accordingly. I mean, when you got a person that's making 24, 25 grand a year, 14% a lot of money. You got a person that's making 90-plus grand a year, 80-plus grand a year, 14% is still a lot of money, but it's not as much money. You understand what I'm saying? And I know, Rob, you know, and I know you do your homework. Like I said, I'm just asking. When that comes out, and I find out more things probably than I should, but there again, I'm not pointing any fingers. Y'all know who I'm married to, so I'm gonna know. Because I have to hear it when, sorry, baby, but, you know, right. So, in a sense, I kinda have to deal with that in a little bit too, you know, yeah, they're wrong, you know, some... I don't always agree. I don't always disagree. But what I'm saying is, when you come to a union and ask for 3 million, not that long ago in a meeting, for a union that's only doing 6-point, what, 2.4 or whatever it is?
It's a little over 6 million.
Yeah. That's a lot of money.
Yes, it is.
And these are the people that live here. These are the people that you came to when you wanted an endorsement to run for school board. Every one of you here I know came to Local 64's union meeting and asked for an endorsement. And if I'm wrong, I, okay, shake your head, baby. It's okay. I'm with you. But they, they know what I'm saying. Everybody here asked for that endorsement. And I understand teachers, I'm not taking nothing from teachers and administrators. They got, they had to pay for their education. I guess I wish I was smart enough. Maybe I could have done it. And I was just never that bright. I'm just kind of a jack-of-all-trades. I'm street smart, and I can survive. But the numbers don't add up when you compare. And I know everybody's saying what they gotta say. I'm saying what I gotta say, and I know you guys' minds are already made up. You know how you're gonna vote. I know. But all I'm saying is, think about that. When you talk about eliminating those few, those five positions, six positions, whatever it is, think about having five administrators at the high school. Kinda compare that. How many of those people, out of those five, how many of those salaries equal out to that 90,000 a year for that one administrator? Do you understand what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, I understand.
You know, that, that, that's all I'm saying, because I don't understand why we're gonna have five. It doesn't make sense, especially when we're already saying our enrollment's gonna be down again next year. So, somewhere, we have to start eliminating a little bit of that. And I know you have. I know you guys have done your homework. I'm just saying you haven't. I'm not gonna argue or try to get you all ruffled up. You know, we could all do that.
And there's more cuts coming, Jay.
I believe it. But all I'm saying is, whenever I find out you asked for half of a union's entire thing, what it costs you a year, and I figure out what 14% is, and 14% is just about a million bucks, maybe a little over, a little under, so we save a million, then how can we ask a union that's only doing 6 million for half of theirs? The numbers don't add up. That's all I'm saying. And I thank you for letting me talk, Rob. I appreciate it. And I didn't mean to yell out at you earlier when I asked.
You didn't yell out. You got my attention.
Well, I asked, you know. I just didn't mean to scream out at you, but thank you for letting me speak.
You're welcome. The last form I have here is for Maria Schneider.
I just have, I have questions.
I'm sorry, Ms. Schneider. Can you hold on one second?
You know, and, and I just wanna answer Jay for a second. I think you, you said it, or Jay, go. Well, he don't have to. I do have to hear it, I guess. But, uh, I mean, it's one of the...
Thank you, Rob.
Yeah. I, I just wanna, I mean, I wanna say something. I mean, you say, you know, 3 million. I understand that. But it's negotiations. It's, who says we're gonna get 3 million from you? I don't know. You know, we don't know. And, and that's negotiations.
I, I understand.
If you come back with a, a number, we have to sit and talk about it. And say, "I guess that's all we're gonna get this year."
You can throw a number out like that, John. That's kind of outlandish.
But, but, I mean, that, that happens to me in my job too, and you probably get experience too. They come out with a number, we sit and bash each other in, and then we come to an agreement and say, "This is all we're willing to give up."
It's a little shocking when you figure out that 14% compared to being asked for 50% or, and compare us at 700,000. They can't even do 700,000. You know, that's, how can you even throw that number out to them? That's just, it's unfair.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you put your faith in your negotiating team to get you to that point and say, "We're not taking them where we are." I, I go through it two years, every two years myself.
If we're a three-plant operation today, it would be like Edison telling us, "We need to go to 500." I, I can't even afford to pull out of the driveway 500 bucks. You know? So, you gotta have, at least have a starting point, but when you come right in at 50%, I understand if you took 30% and negotiated from the 30. I understand that. And I, you know, like I said, I'm starting to understand the negotiating more than my wife, I tell you. My dad's having, he do everything now, which kinda freaks me out, but he's trying to phase out when we can. But, you know, it's just, I understand you have to give and take, and what you may not make up here, you'll make up further down the road. And I understand that too. Maybe some of the people here don't understand that. Yeah, you have to kinda heed it here. But six months from now is when it all comes back. I understand that. But to still ask for 50%, that's, that's just, that's a little outlandish even for my case, and I'm cheap, trust me. I'm cheap, you know? But thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Ms. Schneider, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just had a couple of questions. How much savings are you guys looking for from, from Locals? I, I know I'm coming in late. I've just been hearing the rumors. I happen to do a lot of volunteering at the middle school, and I'm trying to figure out how much savings you're gonna get, because if you really wanna get the savings, why won't you, Miss Pack, negotiate with them? Because I was under the understanding that I lived in a community that honored collective bargaining, and that I was at the polls. My child does not do sports, does not ride the bus. But I was out there all day long pushing that proposal. And I don't see anything bad from, from your side. To not negotiate or not to even talk to these people is insulting. I don't understand why, if you, if you're closing a school and you're still moving the business, you have these people, you have, you don't have, you only have one security guard at the middle school. When I walk in there, I don't see that security guard. I couldn't even tell you what the security guard looks like. But what I do hear from my son is that, yes, he loves all the teachers. He loves all the programs. He's getting all As. But what he can't stand is that when he tries to go through the hallways, the kids are running wild. There is no one stopping the kids. There is no control in Romulus. I did not do what every other parent in Barth did, almost every other parent in Barth did, is look to another community to send their kid to school. I wanted my child to go to Romulus schools. I live in Romulus. I pay taxes in Romulus. There is no reason why my child cannot go to Romulus. But what I'm finding is that with all these cuts, you guys say verbally that you care about the kids, but maybe you should talk to the kids. Because that person in the cafeteria, they know my child's name. They know who my child is. The, the bus drivers, they know who my kid is even though they, they don't, my son doesn't ride the bus, because they're there. I'm there. The, the secretaries. Every time I go into any one of the schools, Barth or at the middle school, I always get a secretary who takes time to talk to me, gives me the attention, doesn't fluff me off. I know she's got 1,000 things. I know people are coming in. I'm more than willing to wait. They have always helped, even when they don't need to help, even when we're trying to do a fundraiser, and that's not really part of their job. They do it for us. So, I don't understand why you can't take those five people and put them in as floaters. When someone calls in sick, why can't you send that security guard to that, to Barth? Why can't you send the custodial person, if someone calls in at Barth? Why can't you send that custodial person there? You have all these schools that you could be sending these people to. When someone calls in sick, do you pay for that time? Do you pay them sick leave? If I call in sick at, at the middle school, do I, do I get...
Yes.
So, the cafeteria staff, if they call in sick, they get paid?
No. Two. Only two people.
It depends on their classification.
Okay. So, then, if those other two people, if someone else who doesn't get sick leave calls in sick, why couldn't that floater take their place? You're not out any money.
They do.
They do.
But you don't need any, you don't need two other custo, I mean, you don't need another custodian? You don't need another cafeteria person?
In a perfect world, we'd have so many, we'd be tripping over them. We also have a responsibility to the taxpayers to have a balanced budget. And right now, we're almost $8 million away from that. So, we're having to make some very painful decisions that aren't comfortable for anybody. They're not comfortable for the board. They're not comfortable for our principals. They're not comfortable for our teachers. They're not comfortable for our custodians. They're not comfortable for our parents and our volunteers.
But what I don't understand is if you go to two other, two other near, not exclusively represented employed groups, and you're willing to negotiate with them, why would you not be willing to negotiate with collective bargaining?
I'm gonna let Ms. Pack speak to that, because that's not a correct statement.
So, the information that was provided today in, in conversation with the board, that was those individuals' perspective of what was happening. It doesn't necessarily equate to the reality of what's happening. I will say, and the board understands this, that we have been attempting to engage in negotiations with Local 64 all along, and we will continue to attempt to engage in negotiations with Local 64.
So, you, do you send over a formal letter?
Absolutely. The statements that were made earlier were, and I'm going to say this, in fact incorrect. But they are statements that, for the board's pleasure. They were statements that were made to the Board of, the Board of Education, and the board has asked me to respond at this point. So, yes, I have requested several meetings, and we have had meetings.
No, no, I'm talking about opening negotiations.
Yes. Those were, yes.
So, you sent over a letter of negotiation?
We have, we have engaged in meetings, and we have been, we have asked them to negotiate. And that's, that's really all that I'm prepared to have a conversation with publicly, because I don't want it to become, I don't want this board to become a public negotiator. We don't wanna negotiate anywhere of, at this table. We wanna negotiate at the board.
So, so who does make the, the decision to negotiate? I'm just trying to figure this out. We do it together. No, no, no. I'm talking about from, from your side.
We've asked to engage in negotiations, but the union has a right to, to reject that request.
So, you, you are the one who sends over a formal notice to the union?
Are you asking who's on the negotiating team for our side?
Yes. I am the chief negotiator for Romulus Community Schools. I represent the Board of Education. Dr. Daniels is also on our negotiating team, as is Mrs. Posick.
Okay, so you only have three people on your team? Because I kept hearing people saying that they didn't have any control over this, or they didn't do this, and then, I thought that the whole school war was on...
We're not in negotiations.
The board gives, the board gives administration direction when it comes to negotiations, and we do have an executive session today to discuss negotiations. And those are conversations that are held in executive session, because they're, they're not appropriate to have in a public session, because they are collectively bargained agreements.
Okay. But I, I still, how much were we trying to save from Justice Lanza?
3 million.
3 million?
Right. And I don't think that's, I don't think that's any secret. You know, the board has given us very clear direction. We have a, we're going into an $8 million deficit. And I'm not sure if you're familiar with school law and the changes that have been made over the last five years, but being in a deficit means that we are rolling down that cliff of having the school district taken over by somebody other than members sitting at this table, the members that care the most about the children of Romulus. So, that's, our, their charge to us is to avoid that fiscal, fiscal cliff. I, I can't, I can't call lines, Becky.
What Rebecca was, the information that I spoke about earlier was exactly what she was saying. We were, we wanted... We were, we wanted to, they, they want to negotiate something, they wanna negotiate a contract, or you wanna negotiate a letter of understanding that we already have, we wanna tweak it so that it isn't broken.
So the layoffs, the layoffs, we'll write a letter of understanding.
All right. Go right ahead and grab it, just one second, Chuck. Go ahead. I don't have a form, so if you could please just state your name and your address.
Okay, my name is Kim Bult, and I've been...
Is that on? The top switch, man. There we go, I heard it.
Um, I'm Kim Bult, I've lived in Romulus mostly all my life, uh, all my kids have went to school here. But my question is, 'cause I'm just really hearing this today while I was here. Um, with you closing Community High and you putting them back at the high school now, most of these students, most of these students moved from out of the high school because of behavioral problems. I mean, I have no problem with most of them, because a lot of them are really nice, because I know some of the students. But here's my thing, I have one more high school in there. I got grandkids that's coming through the system, but how, you know, I mean, I've driven the school bus for a lot of years, I'm just now back as a sub-driver. I've been over there at different times where you see them standing outside smoking cigarettes, doing this, doing that. What do we have to expect at the high school with these kids being over here? How much, I mean, I'm sorry, but I have a, I still have one that's going to 12th grade next year. She's in 11th grade this year. Next year, she's gonna be at 12th grade, what are we as parents? This is how I'm looking at it now, not as a bus driver, but I'm looking at it as a parent now. I have a 12-year-old, 12th grader that's gonna be over there, and this is how I have to look at it. And all of them aren't that.
I can assure you, there won't be smoking.
Well, I mean, they don't, they didn't think that at Community High either, but it happened. Right there on the school property, I mean, you know? I mean...
And there will be a...
All right, try and talk.
I'm sorry. The, the Community High School program that we're moving over to the high school number one, just to be clear, that was my assumption as well, that most of those students are discipline problems. Not really.
Not really.
Yeah, they're, they're students that need a different setting, okay, and, and different structure. With that being said, we feel we can provide that structure. There's a separate part of the high school upstairs that they will be housed in. They will be on a different bell schedule. They will obviously start their school day later, I believe it's gonna be from 10:00 to 5:00, if I'm not mistaken. So there, there won't be the bus traffic, you know, the, the, the interaction there. They will have their separate lunch period and their separate entrance. So th- those things are being addressed, and this board has made it clear that we were gonna, we are gonna very closely monitor that situation to make sure. And that's one of the reasons we haven't actively taken steps other than just giving the appraisal and, and marketing it out possibly to other schools that may wanna house a program. We haven't done anything with Merriman Building, in case we have to make alternative decisions. So please know that we are on that, and we will follow it.
Okay, now, this is my comment as a used-to-be full-time driver, now just a sub-driver coming back to help, 'cause I love my bus drivers. But, um, I also work part-time, like, at the airlines, and they took and put, they made us into a different company, I work under one airline. And the company that they took and made us, now I'm saying this under, for the bus drivers, where they dropped our pay tremendously, it makes everybody out there work a whole lot different, dropping our pay. Now me, as a bus driver, I love driving my kids, I, I talk to them and everything else. When you subcontract out and you drop somebody's pay that much, it makes your work ethic, although you might love your job still, to me personally, just knowing how I see it at the airport, I, you know, I like my job at the airport, but it gives you a different mentality, and you can see the work ethics at the people at the airport. But these, these women here, they love their job, they love their students. My daughter, when I said I'm coming to abort me, I'm seeing what's going on with the drivers. Mom, they better not be getting rid of this one, they better, she was just naming names. They better not be getting rid of Ms. Sandy, they better not, I mean, she's just naming names, naming names, naming names, just... I mean, because all my kids have went through the school this way. And, you know, it's just, they love their drivers, even if they didn't have them, they know their drivers. And you know those drivers that care, especially when you talk to them. And when you cut their pay like that, when you subcontract out, it makes them have a different mentality. And I think that's just something that y'all, instead of just like, maybe if you're thinking about subcontracting, I think it's just better to try to negotiate with the drivers, because it does make a difference. It really does, because we do love our children, and we like to take care of them, but that does make a difference. That's my opinion.
Mr. Miller had asked to speak, and then we'll, we'll move on with the agenda, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I'd like to ask you a question in regards to the wage reopener aspect of the contract. Is that a dictatorial policy, or is it a negotiation process if you do indeed reopen it?
It's negotiate, it's negotiated.
So in order for them to agree to it, you have to negotiate. If they decide they don't want to, you have to take up steps, right?
They have already agreed to, for a wage reopener each year of the contract.
Okay, that's what I was interested in.
So they've already agreed to that.
At a set amount as to the negotiation?
The amount that they, that they've guaranteed that the board will not receive any less than savings than they did in the first year of the agreement. That means we won't go back to the beginning and negotiate from there, we start from that point.
Okay, I, I understand, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. With that, there's a motion on the floor.
Can I make a comment?
Sir.
We are a blue-collar community, our survey response was safe and clean or important. For me, that includes safe transportation. We had classes in grades one through five with only eighteen, nineteen, twenty in a class. Did their scores jump up off the chart? No. I think we need classes of twenty-four or twenty-five to cover our expenses. Not only the teacher's expense, but the building insurance, utilities, the principal, the secretary, portion of the administration expense, close building expense, et cetera. Maybe the answer is full classes and close another elementary school, but for me, the answer is not reduce cleaning or privatization. Should all, should all employees make concessions due to the deficit? Of course. Even AP classes, if it's cheaper to bus them for classes to pay, and pay the tuition versus a small class, then that should be another option.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Go right ahead. I think it's the top switch here.
Harry Crowe. Okay, Harry Crowe. You know, I've been a union member for forty-six years, went through GM, seen a lot of good times, seen a lot of bad times. I believe in our plan at Willow Run, we had fourteen thousand employees working there, at one time, fourteen. Before it closed, they only had fifteen hundred employees. I'm a true union person, Romulus is a, is a union city. It's a blue-collar city, we're not a white-collar, you know? And a lot of promises were made to the union people for a long time, just like a GM. I seen us taking a lot of pay cuts and everything, then I turned around and see the big shots getting a five million dollar bonuses. You sit there, you shake your head, the little guys are getting a shaft, the big guys are making the money. And it's, it's a shame, you know, just like when you guys came to the residents and asked for a non-home set tax, all right? Everybody got out and voted for a non-home set tax, it's for the school, let's do it. Then a few months later, hey, we need a, we need another tax keep busting in sports on. Who got out? Local 64 got out and supported it. It passed by a big majority. Money went for the schools to keep the things going, keep the union people working. All of a sudden, you got the money, I know it's not all your fault, I know what Snyder did, Snyder did to the workers, all the people that retired, that are getting, you know, pension checks, he taxed our pension checks. I'm losing eighty dollars a month out of my pension check, and I know it's, Snyder's a big part of this, you know, a big part of the act that's going on right now. And it's hurting everybody, it's hurting the schools, it's hurting, you know, everybody, everybody's suffering. At one time, how many workers did we have in Local 64? Anybody know the answer to this? What are we, what are we down to now? One thirty-one? You know, as a union person, we start getting rid of union workers, all of a sudden, you're not gonna have a union no more. Snyder's trying to break the union, no matter how you look at it, what he's trying to do to everybody. Especially, especially in, uh, last December, he passed a new bill in the law, didn't weigh with personal business tax, property tax on all your business. This is gonna cost the city of Romulus come January one point seven million dollars, we're gonna be short. So everybody's gonna be suffering, everybody's gonna be suffering. But you gotta remember, if you can negotiate with these guys here and give them a fair deal, just give them a fair deal, let's keep our union workers on. Thank you.
Okay, moving along, there's a motion on the floor, moved by Mrs. Buckley, supported by Mrs. Funderdorff. Are there any, uh, further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries five and two. Next item on the agenda is, uh, the next person on the, the chair will entertain a motion. Starts off the same way. It's the next page. Everybody found it?
Mr. Chair, due to reasons of projected decline in student enrollment and financial exigency, we move that the Board of Education of Romulus Community Schools accept the recommendation of administration to lay off the following number of Local 64 positions from their employment from the school district. Bus driver three, effective at the end of the day on June thirteenth, two thousand thirteen. Safety monitor one, effective at the end of the day on June thirteenth, two thousand thirteen. And custodial A two, effective at the end of the day on June thirtieth, two thousand thirteen.
Been moved by Ms. Buckley, supported by Mrs. Fear. Any questions?
Yes.
Ms. Buckley.
So this is due to the declining enrollment, so if these, if our enrollment does not drop, these positions will come back.
Can you repeat that, we could not hear you.
But that's what I just asked, or what I just...
What you just said about the numbers and what positions, we could not hear you.
I was gonna say, you want me to? To, to restate the motion, is that better? Can you hear that? To restate the motion, the motion was, due to reasons of projected decline in student enrollment and financial exigency, move that the Board of Education of Romulus Community Schools accept the recommendation of the administration to lay off the following number of Local 64 positions from their employment with the school district. Bus drivers, three, effective the end of the day, June thirteenth, two thousand thirteen. Safety monitor, one, effective the end of the day, June thirteenth, two thousand thirteen. And custodial A, two, effective at the end of the day, June thirtieth, two thousand thirteen. Now to answer the question that Ms. Buckley had, it's in addition, projected decline in student enrollment, and this is part of the deficit elimination plan, the financial exigency wording, that's consistent with layoffs in, in bargaining contract, like.
And like you said, based on, based on enrollment, projected enrollment happened if the numbers start going up by...
It's possible, it's possible. That was my question. But we're also looking at, at looking at other ways to save costs, including bus transportation, looking at the routes very carefully, and, and running those routes as efficiently as possible. In addition to the custodial, we're looking at ways that we can maximize the staff.
Yes, yes.
Absolutely. Any further questions from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries five and two. Yes. The next items were items of interest from the superintendent, and then board members. You had an addendum, um, that was in front of your seat. This was, uh, for the Fourth of July. The, the reason that there was some confusion on this, when we were contacted and asked if, if the Rotary could host the fireworks at Wick and the middle school, the implication was that they would actually be discharging the fireworks there on the, on the school property, and that poses an insurance problem. It's been clarified now that that wasn't the intent. There is some city-owned property behind that area that is the intended launch site, if you will, for the fireworks. So the Rotary Club, in conjunction with the city, is seeking for formal approval to use our parking lots at Wick and at the middle school, including, uh, probably the lawns, as happens every time we do have fireworks. And they will assume responsibility for restoring any, uh, ruts that may take place or what have you. And your, your topic sheet here specifically excludes use and access to the athletic field to make sure. And the Rotary had assured me that they will have volunteers stationed to make sure people don't, you know, jump the fences and do their thing, uh, you know, they, they will secure the area. Um, so you do have a topic sheet before you, I apologize. This only got confirmed as far as a, 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 a clear plan of action around four P.M. today, and it just was not feasible for me to get it to you to, to clarify. This was originally on our agenda last week, and it was pulled off because again, we thought it was an insurance issue. There is no cost to this, so, uh, the chair will entertain a motion.
I move that the Board of Education authorize the use of Wick Elementary and Romulus Middle Schools' parking lots and field, excluding the use of the athletic field, to the Romulus Rotary and City of Romulus for the Fourth of July celebration.
Thank you, it's been moved by Mrs. Kraut and supported by Mrs. Fear. And I'll also point out, uh, ladies and gentlemen, that, um, it says for the Fourth of July celebration, because the date is still kind of up in the air. So it's either going to be June twenty-ninth or July fourth, we're not absolutely sure yet. Because they're negotiating, because the original plan with the original fireworks company may not still be in place. So the Rotary is, they're handling that, so that's why there's not a locked-in date. But they could not wait until June tenth, when we meet next, to get approval to move forward. So I, I thank the board for accommodating, Jim. Are there any questions?
I do, um, with this particular event, I'm more than sure that there will be arrangements made with the fire department.
Oh, always.
Okay.
John will be there. John will be there, he'll have a big fireworks...
And will we be, will we know what the vicinity, so how close the fireworks will actually be fired off from our buildings? And I, I guess that's more of my concern, because, you know, depending upon...
About a city block.
The weather that day, I mean, you know, or how much dry weather we have, you know, it, it poses a higher hazard to, you know, our buildings if, if they are close. Because I know in the past, they've used Elmer Johnson Park to have that particular event, and so we didn't have to worry about.
It's about a city block, at least.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you.
Any further questions?
Brad, I have a question.
Yes.
Then we have, I'm just, will we be in compliance in regards to fire law? Because, you know, even though they stipulated as a parking lot, you know, I look across from the cemetery and people park there and watch the fireworks. They do their fire practice, they do their sparklers, with us being a school property, will we be in compliance with the law for that?
Yes, because they won't be using our property to launch the fireworks, it'll be a...
She's saying... She's saying...
Well, that happens every year, uh, we can't control that. I mean, and, and, you know, I mean, just to use an example, not with fireworks, but there's a few families that are racing through our parking lots on dirt bikes right now. And theoretically, we have a liability exposure to that. If they hit a chuckle, yeah, so, you know, I just assume chain off those parking lots.
Just a concern.
But, yeah.
Can you say that again? I'm sorry, I missed that. I'm sorry, can, what?
You missed what?
What, what she was saying about it being in compliance?
In compliance with the fire marshal law, because with us being a school property, where that we're not supposed to have any explosive devices, and it's where that, you know, for the Fourth of July celebration, it's known for people to have their own fireworks, their own sparklers. their own sparklers, so.
As long as it's after school hours, it's a.
No, we're not.
Are there any further questions? Hearing none, motion is on the floor, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I understand, I'm not sure if there's paperwork that need to be on that, or whatever, I I just don't feel comfortable with it, unless it's in writing.
I mean, I can quickly speak on that. Lynn, whenever they do the fireworks, even at Elmer Johnson, it's done by professional company, and they have to adhere to all the fire department, they have to come out, be able to shoot off at a certain spot, and they're supposed to land, and after the fireworks is over, the company and the fire department search the whole area for anything that was not, you know, blown off or something like that. They account for everything.
Yeah, she's stuck.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but but kids, that's gonna be up to the local ordinance, and then now they changed the fire ordinance and or the fireworks in Michigan, that, you know, before nothing could leave the ground, and the state of Michigan's trying to get on the bandwagon too, to collect that money, because they know people are bringing fireworks from the from the Ohio and Indiana. So now, you can see fireworks buildings going up, and now they're trying to make stipulations that they have to sprinkle and stuff like that, but now you're gonna see a lot of fireworks go up in the air, and it's, you have to revert back to the police ordinance that, you know, if it leaves the ground or if it leaves the air, but the state will supersede a lot of that, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, I I was trying to let you know that I got you correct, come on up, you can use the, use the mic, please.
Just real quick, in the past, the fire department also went down the surrounding areas.
Yes. Yeah, like any property, we had, we surrounded Elmer Johnson with trucks and made sure that we watched everything come down, and that company counts and knows what went off and didn't go off, so. At least for the surrounding houses, that nobody was in danger, yeah.
Next item is other, we have nothing under other, communications and expressions from the public, I think we kind of been there, done that, but is there anybody that still wishes to address the board? No? Questions and concerns of board members? Last time I started, this time I'll have you start, Mrs. Bowles.
Um, not, not at the time.
Thank you. Ms. Crowe?
Well, tomorrow is the student of the month grand finale, which is an exciting thing, and Thursday night is the high school concert and choir, band and choir, so that's always something special.
Thank you. Ms. Funderburg?
I got a laundry list. Okay, so, last week was a pretty busy week, we had our decision day with our seniors, and we celebrated the fact that they either received a letter of acceptance to a post-secondary institution, whether it be college or vocational, and so we had ninety-five percent of our our students, our senior class, who made decisions and have received acceptance letters, which kind of brings us into our senior awards dinner that we had Thursday, and our students secured seven point four million dollars in scholarship money, and so that is an awesome feat, and I I want to say that the number was set at four, so they exceeded it, you know, by leaps and bounds, and so I'm more than sure that Mr. Hurd will probably set it close to eight or nine for twenty fourteen, so we're looking forward to that, they got a lot of work to do. But it it was a really good opportunity to just kind of see our children shine, and and to, you know, watch them, how they just blossomed, and and they're becoming, they'll be adults, and so, you know, as I get to do it next year, and and, man, it it was just, it was a really nice event. We had several board members who were able to participate and and enjoy in the festivities, and our culinary arts department put out a fabulous spread, I mean, they feed us very well, and and they, the students prepare and and serve, and it's just, it, we, it's really a good opportunity to see our kids shine. Also, too, we had a play, our drama department did a play, they did the Little Shop of Four S., and they had some definite hurdles and challenges to overcome with this particular production, and our kids, our kids stepped up to the plate to to get people to come in and sit with them, not while they were able to go over their lines and and rehearse and and put on the play, and so they had a really good time, and they they did a really good job. You know, one of the things that, as just kind of one of those wishful thoughts or hopes, is I would love to see that program grow, I would love to see, you know, better props and, you know, just a better sound system and, you know, those different things, so those are those aspirations, but I can definitely say that our kids know how to act, it gives them a good outlet, and and they did a really, really good job. And then we had our, the band boosters had a citywide garage sale, which we, you know, we hadn't, we didn't do it last year, but we participated in it this year, and I just wanted to say thank you to the community who came out and and purchased some odds and ends from us, and we made, was it like five hundred? Five hundred dollars? Yeah, and so, it's really nice to to have that support, so we just wanted to say thank you to our community.
Yes, Mr. Buck, and I have one thing, I was looking at the city council meeting, I heard when the council, people talking about one of their grandchildren, and I said, you know what, I need to get that information, because I need to share with our board, because it is one of our students at Wick Elementary, her name is Kendall Dorsey, and she's the granddaughter of Eva Webb, who's our councilperson, but because of her academic achievement, she was, I guess she was nominated by one of the teachers at the school from People to People, and she is able to choose any of the schools, Harvard, Stanford, Yale, Columbia, John Hopkins, University of Chicago, UCLA, Tulane, PACE, or George Washington, to attend, to experience the college experience, to explore a future in a chosen field, so she has chosen to do Harvard. So this is one of our students at Wick Elementary, and just so people understand that our students are doing very well in our elementary schools, and they and they excel, and they soar, and this is just one of the, one of the things that I just felt that I had to say, because when I heard, I said, wow, that is great, because I didn't even know it, but I wanted everybody, the board to know, and our audience to know, and her name is Kendall Dorsey.
Congratulations, Doug.
So congratulations to Kendall.
Mr. Thied?
Yeah, you know, I have something that, it it's kind of personal, this weekend, I heard a lot of people question, came up to me and heard, said they heard it from certain people, and I know some of the people who said it, and basically, they said something that they heard that I was transferring my daughter into another school district, and this all stemmed from a problem I had last year with our former superintendent and a substitute teacher, which got remedied, and it was beginning at the school year, and my first concern as a parent, was best for my daughter, and, you know, I'm just like Jay and Mr. Mill, everybody in here probably grew up and around us, and it's sad to see our city and sometimes our schools going to where they're going, and and I know why probably the rumor mill started this week, because of tonight, and the people are gonna put pressure on, but there's no surprise, I brought this incident up during a school board meeting, and the public, and I said it right there, that if stuff did change in the school district, I'm pulling my kid. I will sell my house, I will move somewhere, and I will take my kid, because she's my first concern. And there's no doubt, there's no rumor, we did check in other school districts, but we never visited a school, we made one phone call to a neighboring city and decided not to go there, because these two ladies in the front row rejuvenated my faith in Ramus schools right here, because I transferred my daughter to Ramel, and she can't be more happier. And and so I I really appreciate that from those two ladies right there, but, you know, it's just funny how the rumor mill started that this had to be a new event that John Thied is gonna move his kid out of school, and this happened nine months ago, and I brought it up for the public, and told him my displeasure with the superintendent, and it was nothing to do with our staff except one substitute teacher, who didn't know my daughter.
And our superintendent.
And our superintendent, when me and him went fist to cuffs all the time
Former.
about this incident.
Rumors surprised you?
Exactly.
Rumors in this town?
No. And and like I said, you know, it's 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 like I said, and and my daughter will be my first priority, and, you know, and and it's something that my daughter actually told me a week and a half ago, and she said, Dad, how come I don't see you? Because, like anybody else, I work two jobs myself, because I'm into pay cuts, I don't have retiree healthcare, you know, we're losing stuff like that, too, and that's why, I tell my daughter, that's why, honey, because I have to support you, you know, so she comes first, and God, I hope I never have to move out around the schools, you know, but I like to thank those two right there, because they pushed me into getting her to where she needed to be, so, that's all I got. But anyways, if you hear that, that was last year, and I even brought it up here when I was sitting in Tamika's chair down here, so.
It'd be your turn.
The only thing I really have is, only because we're not going to be meeting until June tenth, I want to congratulate the seniors in the class of two thousand thirteen. We have a lot of events coming up for them coming up soon, and I just kind of wanted to highlight some of them, May thirtieth, the elementaries are going to be having a district spelling bee, that'll be at the high school. For the seniors, on June second is their baccalaureate ceremony, which is going to be a community event, I believe, right? The Community Methodist Church. June fifth is the promto, so I want the seniors to please be safe, be sensible, have a good time, and June sixth is our community high school grad, and June eighth is the Ramus Senior High School graduation, and I just wish them all the best of luck, they've made us proud, and I'm proud to be a citizen and a student, a result of Romulus.
Come on, get it on.
Also, one more thing, I wanted to congratulate, too, the elementary schools for our award that we got, too.
I'm stealing.
Danielle and I were fortunate enough to go for the Excellence Award ceremonies with Dr. Daniels and with Mrs. McAnally, so that they could receive their award for the Camp Learn-A-Lot that's done during the summer, and great job, congratulations.
June second.
June second, if I can. Two things I had, one of them was, again, to congratulate Mrs. McAnally and her staff and volunteers that that did the Camp Learn-A-Lot program last year, and they submitted it for recognition with Michigan Association of School Awards, they were selected as a recipient of the Michigan Education Excellence Award. I, of course, was there in spirit, but I was enjoying my time at the House of Mouse, but, you know, love my wife, and if anybody saw the pictures on Facebook, yes, I know I'm a fat man, and I need to work on that, because the pictures are not flattering at all. I was shocked, yeah, it's a bad angle, that's it, the camera asked. Yeah, it it, I was mortified that, oh, anyway, People to People, it's interesting, because, you know, Romulus has been producing excellent opportunities for our children for years, and the reason I say that, I knew about this this opportunity for for Ms. Webb's granddaughter, but I didn't know it through People to People. Some of you may know, both of my children were fortunate enough to go through that program as well. Matter of fact, my oldest, Jonathan spent his twelfth birthday in London, at the Hard Rock Cafe in London, he did the British Isles tour with them, and my youngest went to Australia for twenty-six days, I believe, and they came back, changed people, and and I don't mean that in a bad way, they they, their maturity level went light years because of the experiences and the opportunities, the cultural differences, because some of this is with host families, some of it's in dorms, some of it's in hotels, but phenomenal, and any parent, and I say this to any parent in Romulus or anywhere for that matter, if your child is fortunate enough to be nominated in this program, yes, it's a financial sacrifice, it is, make it, make that sacrifice for your child, you will not regret it, it is absolutely an investment in who they become as adults. With that, we do have a reason to go into executive session for negotiations update, there will not be any action taken afterwards, other than adjourning, so, you know, if you choose to stay, you can, but I trust you, you'll be bored. One last question, Ms. Webb.
Just a comment, board members, just in case, May twenty-ninth is field day for the elementaries, rain day is the thirty-first, so if you have.
Thank you. With that, the Chair will entertain a motion for executive session.
Mr. Chair, make a motion, we go into the second session for negotiations update.
It's been moved by Ms. Buckley, supported by Mr. Thied, to go into executive session for negotiations update. Mr. Thied, did I have a roll called votes, please?
Ms. Bowles?
Yes.
Ms. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Funderburg?
Yes.
Mrs. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Beard?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Thied, yes.
We are in executive session at nine twenty-three P M. Okay, we are back, Chair will entertain a motion, go back into open session.
So moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Funderburg, supported by Ms. Buckley, to go into open session. Uh, Mr. Thied, can you do a roll, please?
Ms. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Funderburg?
Yes.
Mrs. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Beard?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Thied, yes.
We are in open session at ten thirteen, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Funderburg, supported by Mr. Thied.
Aye.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We are adjourned at ten fourteen, thank you.